... meeting. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Here.
Pritchett.
Here.
Stengline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is an approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item five is a consent calendar where all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll calls.
Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson, Pritchett, Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, we are underway. We have an agenda. Next up is item six, which is presentations. First up is the Northern Pacific Center presentation. Mr. Higgins, come on up. State your name and address, please.
Hi.
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 Mike Higgins, 1801 Mill Avenue and 1511 Northern Pacific Center. So, thanks for letting me speak tonight. Been in a few council meetings and a few EDA meetings here lately and seems to be a lot of, what's the word, excitement going on in the city of Brainerd right now. And I just wanted to come in and kind of give you guys an end of the year update on where things are at on the Northern Pacific Center. Me and Sharon have been there oh, 32 months now. Of course, a year that's been in the pandemic, been a little rough. Kind of was wondering about my investment for a while, but things are going pretty good now. You know, you guys, the staff and the city of Brainerd, a lot of people are, seem to be upset and frustrated right now, but I've been here seven years and I've seen a lot of, a lot of city council turnover. I've seen a lot of staff turnover. And I must say that it is night and day. What I'm dealing with as a business owner and what I'm, the help and the support that I'm getting from the council and the staff right now is night and day difference from when I got here. I can remember, you know, a past council member climbing in a tree and taking pictures and telling the building inspector I was doing things and the building inspector calling me when I first got here and, and, you know, I was like, well, come on down. If I'm doing something wrong, come on over to the paper mill and the gates open and let's go look around and see. If I'm doing something wrong, I'll fix it. You know, if I'm not doing something wrong, tell everybody to leave me alone. I'm just, you know, I don't know what I'm doing and I'm, I'm just gonna try to save this paper mill and create some jobs and we'll see what happens. And I think a lot of people forget that because they're not here. What you guys have done and what the staff's done with, working with me on building out the Northern Pacific Center is unlike anything I've worked for or worked with in any other place in my 30 years of being in business. And because of that, because of the support and the help I get from staff and from council, I just want to kind of run down a little list of, you know, me and Derek have been working on an economic impact study at Northern Pacific Center ourselves. We're gonna have the University of Minnesota come up and do one next year so we can, can get something official and get something to show people. But we've opened, in 24 months, there's been 16 new businesses open at the Northern Pacific Center. We've had 122 weddings that are, 85% of them are destination weddings, so that's outside money from 60-mile radius and out coming to our town and our community and staying in our hotels and shopping at our shops and buying food at our restaurants and going to a wedding. There's, as of, as of a couple of weeks ago, there's over 100 people that work at the Northern Pacific Center between the 16 businesses. We just did a, kind of a straw poll and went through and added it up and that, these numbers surprised me and Derek too. I mean, we, we just stuck our head down and we've worked our butts off and, and we finally kind of got to the end of wedding season and, and it's just like, what have we, what have we really done? Let's sit down and take a break and, and kind of relax for a little while and see what's happened. We've now got eight annual community events there that are all reoccurring and all coming back. And I would say by the end of next year that that number will double. There'll be 16 annual events, whether it's the boat show, the all-board expo, wrestling, some concerts, some, our markets, you know, we had a, a Christmas market there on, a couple of weeks ago and we had 70 vendors, plus our shops vendors from four different states. We had over 3,000 people go through there in eight hours and we estimate that there was $350,000 spent on that property in one day. The, the biggest number and the coolest number for me is, is, and this is an estimate and we are gonna work on starting to keep a little bit closer track of visitors, but we've had over a million visitors there in the last 24 months. That's something as a city and as you guys as council and the city staff should celebrate. And it isn't just me, it's you guys too. We've done that together. Your staff has helped me with building permits and, and, and getting through issues and trying to figure out how to, how to do things to code and still keep the aesthetics of 150-year-old historic buildings. And as all you all know, with the water tower and everything that you deal with, it's, when you work with old stuff, it's hard. It's easier to tear it down and build new, but I just feel like I was, was meant to keep that, the history of that building and that infrastructure and, and do something with it. And I think you, you know, watch my feet, don't listen to my mouth. That's been my saying since the day I got here, but I think you'll see that place turn into a world-renowned resort over the next three to five years. You know, we've got lodging coming, we've got more businesses we're working on and I just wanted to say thank you for helping and working with me and, and being pro-business because there's people that think you guys aren't pro-business and I can go back seven years ago and show tapes and, and show conversations where I was scratching my head sitting in the paper mill after I'd been here for three months, wondering what did I do. And I don't feel that way today. I feel like I've, you guys have supported me and trusted me and, and we've built a relationship and I just kind of wanted to, to follow up and say thank you and tell you that I appreciate each and every one of his hard work. And that's where I'm at today.
Want to take any questions?
Yeah, I would love to.
Any questions for Mr. Higgins? No? Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, next up is 6B, the Water Tower Committee Presentation. Who's ever gonna speak for the Water Tower? Come on up. State your name and address, please, so the people watching on YouTube, if there are any.
Paul Skogan, 13347 Norway Drive in Baxter. I'm just here to make a short, quick, little speech, or not a speech, but a little congratulations to the city of Brainerd and to Paul Sandy and Dave Chansky for the successful grant application that we received. We've got approval from the state of Minnesota, from the Historical Society, for the grant of $162,000, plus or minus, and with the matching funds, so that's 320-some-odd thousand dollars that we have going towards the water tower, the roof repair. And talking to Paul Sandy earlier today, he'll get going on that after he meets with the LHB, Mike Lovato, over at LHB, and will get us a, a up-to-date set of specifications and an up-to-date set of plans, and he'll work on sending that out sometime early next year. So I just want to say congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions, Paul?
No, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
All right. Our last presentation, 6C, is Brainerd Community Action.
Oh, boy.
That's right. Coming down.
Time.
Coming down.
First of all, I would also like to, I'd like to start off by thanking, I'd like to start off by thanking you as well. You are all amazing people, especially the mayor. I see that he can't make it right now, but different hat on, super fast. I brought with me two of my members from my board, Dave Bedeau, Executive Director of Brainerd Community Action, 602 North Ninth Street, over there by wonderful St. Francis School. Super fast, you have before you our information in terms of who we are, some basic information about this last year, and then our financials is directed. And I wanted to bring these two gentlemen with, to have them speak super fast, to let you just get a quick overview of what Brainerd Community Action is and how we're doing. So, Henry Praska, this year's board president, and Bill Satri, next year's board president.
Hey, I think this year was a successful year. We've accomplished a lot given the COVID pandemic. We've definitely been a little conservative as far as things, making sure that our funding and whatnot was, was there to still let the facilities that we partake. This year was also an exciting year because we really are trying to expand what community action is more than just the Fourth of July celebration. And I think that's, we've had a very successful year in making that, making that happen. So, it's been a good year.
So what do we look forward to in the next year? One of the things that we're really looking forward to is continuing with our development of nonprofits in the city of Brainerd and funding along the lines for some of those projects that, that they, they bring with them. So we've seen a lot of success with that this year in some of our opportunities that, including Splash Pad and now with the, the next project that we're working on with the, the park for the, skate park, thank you very much. So, lots of things like that that are, you know.
Yeah, the halfpipe.
You know exactly what I mean.
Little tiny skateboard.
Exactly. So we're very excited about what 2022 has in store for community action and how we can help in the community.
Thank you.
And I'll just, I'll just super fast finish up. You know, a lot of people in this community are touched by what this organization does, but a lot of people also don't know that we exist. And I think that's the biggest struggle that we have and we have focused on the last two years on making sure that we are out in the community, reaching out and making sure that people are aware that we are here as a resource. That's really what we do. We make connections with people. We are resources for people that have charitable ideas but don't know how to get started, as well as helping people create their own 501(c)(3)'s and move forward. The groups that we work with change every single year and what we are and what we do changes every year because of that, but it's really important for us to continue to seek out new ventures and then also support the ones that have completed their progress as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Any questions for, yes, chief?
No question, just a comment. David's done an excellent job. I'm the council liaison for that committee and he does a great job along with the board.
Thank you, chief. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate.
Thank you.
All you do. Item seven is our community member of the month. We're gonna just delay that a little bit because they're not here yet.
Well, that's okay. They're not.
Okay.
I'll just do it real quick.
Okay.
You have two minutes.
Mayor Bedeau.
So back to me again.
You're the person.
Community member of the month. Sadly, they are not able to join us tonight. They just sent me a text saying that they're not gonna make it. But John and Don Graff of Southeast Brainerd, the other night, we went as a family, my family and I, to go to the arboretum to look at the lights, but because of the storm that came through on Wednesday, they were actually closed on Thursday because they had some storm damage. And so we drove around the entire city looking to see who had lights and what was going on. I'm gonna tell you what, it's an up-and-down game out there. Overall, B minus, Brainerd, B minus. We can do better. We can do better. However, there are some really, really impressive displays out there. And Don and, and John, every single year, put up an amazing display. And I can say that we just drove by there again last night to take a photo and my 15-year-old son was with us and he said, ooh. And if you can get a 15-year-old boy to say, ooh, about Christmas lights, you have done something really, really special. So, we'll get out to Don and John and get them, their certificate and get their, their handshake and whatnot, which is the most important part, as we all know, the handshake with the mayor. But we just want to thank them. And Don and John are community members of the month.
What neighborhood?
They are over on Wright Street. The corner of Wright, the corner of Wright and Eighth, I believe. Back by.
Follow the lights when you get out there.
Yeah, if you get on Wright Street and you, and you see a beacon, that's where you are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item eight is our council committee reports. 8A is Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had three items tonight on SPW, and first of which was the approval of a final pay estimate for the improvement 20-05, 20-06 Madison Street and Southeast Brainerd improvements. Motion coming out of staff is to approve the attached final payment estimate for improvement 20-05 and 20-06 to DeShantel Excavating in the amount of $2,503,543.81. And I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Pritchett. Any discussion?
This is just final closeout. It sounds like, according to Mr. Sandy, this is the first time in a while we've been able to close one out in the same year that it was actually constructed. So it's not gonna drag into next year as far as billing. It was right around the original estimate of about 2.5 million, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Next was a approval, we're going too far, approval of a stipulation to amend the assessment role for improvement 19-19. Motion coming out of commission, committee. I do way better on paper. Staff is to approve the recommended stipulation as presented. I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Erickson. Any discussion?
Yeah, there was some, this is regarding the Gustafson Property down by the Civic Center. When we redid the roundabout, there was some confusion where we actually bought land from Gustafson Properties and then taxed them for it while we owned it. So we're making those corrections and everybody's happy.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Yeah, the last item was a resolution advancing municipal state aid street funds. This, this is regarding the state aid street funds for next year's big project on South Sixth Street, the southern end of South Sixth Street to Greenwood Street. This is gonna be money that's used to cover that, the city's portion of the project. And the motion coming out of committee was to recommend adopting the attached resolution in which advanced municipal state aid street funds for 2022 construction of state aid eligible roadways. And I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Pritchett. Any further discussion? End of discussion.
Questions?
None. Hearing none? Oh, it's a resolution, so Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Anything else?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Item nine is unfinished business. Item 9A is an ordinance 1523 amending the city charter. Administrator Bergman, do you want to take us through this?
I sure can. I can be brief. The city council held the first reading of, of ordinance 1523 on November 15th and the second reading in the public hearing on December 6th. However, since only six council members were present, we did need to put this on tonight's agenda. As you may recall, the statute does require for charter ordinances, an affirmative vote of all members of the city council, and all members must be present. So with that, Mr. Chair, we're just looking for.
So we're looking for a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 1523, an ordinance amending the Brainerd City Charter. So move. Motion by Pritchett is there, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chair, I believe this is a roll call vote.
Okay. Doesn't say a resolution. All right, so our motioner to adopt the resolution, Mr. Stunek to adopt the resolution. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Item 9B is a resolution setting the 2022 levy and adoption of the 2022 budgets. Connie Hillman, are you with us?
I am.
Anything you wish to let us know about on this before we look for a motion?
Correct. So just real quick, the preliminary levy was set in September at a 2% increase over the 2021 levy. And again, the final levy can be lower but cannot be higher than the preliminary levy. At the November workshop, staff presented the options to lower the final levy and the pros and cons of each. The resolution and the budgets included in the packet were prepared with the 2021 final levy being the same as the preliminary levy, a 2% increase in the amount of $6,255,826, because this was the general consensus of the council at the workshop and was what was presented for the budget public hearing. The memo that staff prepared does include dollar amounts of various options of council wishes to set the final levy and alternative amount.
Thank you. Any questions for Finance Director Hillman? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution setting the city and HRA levies for 2022 as presented?
So move.
Motion. Motion by Stunek, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
No.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Next up, we're looking for a motion setting the 2022 budgets as presented. So move. Motion by Pritchett is there, a second?
Second.
Second by Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none. Are we roll calling this one? Sure. We'll roll call this one.
All right. Johnson.
No.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That budget, yeah, that budget and tax levy are approved. Next up is the committee recommendations. Mayor Bedeau is up first.
You have one minute. So I do have a slight question on a couple of these. We have a bunch of recommendations here. I'm, I'm concerned that a couple of these may have not been actually listed previously as being available. So I just want to make sure. I'm gonna make all these recommendations, but I just want to make sure that we have staff go through and ensure that that is the case.
We will confirm, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. All right, so the following recommendations. Dan Hagseth for Cable TV Advisory Committee, Mary Cope, TAC, Lisa Nobel, TAC, Troy Rushmeyer, Parks, Jeff Chizok, TAC, Nathan Bertram, TAC, Karen Strobel, Library. Move to approve, Johnson.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by, who was it, Pritchett. Any discussion on the mayor's recommendations? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. I have three recommendations. Keith, I believe it's Rydell for the airport, Teresa Woodward for planning and Mike Duval for planning.
Move approval.
Motion by Johnson, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We have a call for applicants.
All right, so we've got all, we've got a bunch of recommend, or a bunch of, wow. I'm just gonna take my time. Anyways, moving on. The following applications are available on our website, www.cibrainermn.us. A few of these may have been filled above, but we're gonna list them all. Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2021, one term expiring 2022. Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022, one term expiring 2025. Housing and Redevelopment Authority, one term expiring 2022, one term expiring 2026. Library, one term expiring 2028. Public Utilities Commission, one term expiring 2026. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, three terms expiring 2022. And also Economic Authority, one term expiring 2026 and one term expiring 2027.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have three appointments open. The Airport Commission, one term to expire 2024, and the Planning Commission, one term to expire 2023, two terms to expire 2024, as well as two positions available on the Water Tower Committee. Item 10 is new business. Item 10A is a resolution. What is this one? Oh, this is the memorandum of understanding. Administrator Bergman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. The state of Minnesota recently announced that they're receiving more than $300 million from a settlement that they had with opioid companies. The vast majority of those funds will be going to cities and counties. The state has been working with the League of Minnesota Cities as well as the Coalition of Greater Minnesota, Minnesota Cities, among others, to come up with a memorandum of agreement to allocate and distribute those opioid funds. The state is asking cities and counties to sign on to the settlement to maximize the resources that the state will receive. This will also allow the city of Brainerd to get an allocation of these funds to assist with the opioid crisis. The MOA does allow the city to contribute those funds either to the county or to another nonprofit. So, staff is recommending adopting the resolution, approving the memorandum of agreement between the state of Minnesota and local governments, specifically the city of Brainerd, and authorizing the participation in the national opioid settlements.
Any questions of Administrator Bergman? Hearing none. We're looking for a motion to adopt the resolution on the memorandum of agreement between the state of Minnesota and local governments and authorizing the participation in the national opioid settlements. So move. Motion by Pritchett, second by O'Day. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
No.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. Now we're gonna back up to 10A, which is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the summary of publication for ordinance 1520. Administrator Bergman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. We are required by state statute to publish all ordinances adopted by the city council within 45 days of the date of adoption. Since the charter ordinance is really long, Attorney Langle has drafted a summary of that ordinance for publication, so that ordinance would then take effect 90 days after the adoption. And we're just asking that the council adopt the resolution approving the summary publication of the charter ordinance.
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek. And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. We'll move on to number 11, which is a public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. I'd like to keep it to three to five minutes if we can. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to bring something forth to the council? We are open for business at four minutes to eight for anything that we're not discussing this evening. Okay? Anybody online there? Nope? Okay. At three minutes' date, we will close the public forum and move on to staff reports. Let's go over to Chief Bestle. Anything back there, Tony? Chris, Connie and Eric. Hi, Connie, you're up.
Hi. I would just like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I would also like to thank staff for all of their hard work on getting the budget put together for 2022. Can't do it without them, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Connie. How about Chris or Eric? Nope, you guys are okay?
Nothing from Chris other than Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. Eric? No?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public Works Director Sandy?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Community Development Director Chansky, Attorney Langle, our fire chief. Nope, we're all good. We will move on to the, City Administrator Bergman.
I will be brief. I just really want to give a shout out to our wellness committee who has worked really, really hard in the last month, both to the BEA Senior Project that we did for Home Instead, as well as Operation Sandwich. This, this group does a ton of work. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Look at that, we were almost gonna make a half hour meeting. I'm gonna slow it down, of course. Two things just to mention, super fast. In your packet, there is a layout that is being worked on for the Mississippi Trailhead, Mississippi Landing Trailhead Park, or P5, park, 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 as we refer to it. Take a look at that baby when you get a chance. It's gonna be something special. is being worked on for the Mississippi Trailhead, Mississippi Landing Trailhead Park, or P5 Park, 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 as we refer to it. Take a look at that baby when you get a chance, it's gonna be something special. As you are aware, two-point-eight-five million dollars gifted to us from the state. We will spend exactly two-point-eight-five million dollars, not a penny more. That is absolutely gonna be the case, but it's looking fantastic and great, great move in the city of Brainerd to remove a parking lot, puts on-street parking, and create a park, even though it's got the longest name in the history of parks, and something called a play container, which I, I don't know what engineers are doing, but I think you mean playground, but play container is an interesting concept.
Architects, not engineers.
Architects. Play container.
It sounds like a suffocation risk.
Yeah, we have a watch hotel or something. We've got a river overlook, we've got an amphitheater, we've got a play container. That's gonna happen. And then lastly, I just, to piggyback on both Paul Skogan from the Water Tower Committee and Mike Higgins from NP Event Center, the Water Tower Committee has Christmas bulbs still available at Visit Brainerd, fifteen dollars, get your hands on one of those, handful of those still left, and a really cool Lego sculpture that was made by Cody over at the NP Event Center. He's got a shop in there, and there, it's an expensive ordeal, two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars, but it's well worth it. I had, was supposed to have that done for tonight. I started it, I gave myself an hour and fifteen minutes, I got halfway done with it. So either it is a complex situation or I am terrible at Legos. You want me to help you with that? Yeah. But they're a fantastic thing, he's only making twenty of them, and get your hands on one, 'cause it's really, really impressive, and it was actually a lot of fun to start putting it together. I wish I would've gotten it done, so, end of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ted, anything?
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.